We'll go ahead and get started. I think the streaming has started now and we'll turn it over to Dr. Nauti.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Board members, we have the work session agenda with a budget review. Dr. Putnam has a couple of things. Ms. Barker's going to update us on summer school. And then I have just a couple of announcements at the, at the end. I would like, as we have advertised, to go into closed session for a couple of personnel updates. You know, we have a practice now of me telling you about things that will come on Monday at the real, at the, the real meeting, the regular meeting. That usually saves us a little, little time on Monday, but I don't expect any action there, Mr. Francis, unless you all want to do something. Okay, so welcome to the Thursday, April 15th work session for Haywood County Schools. We will start with the budget overview. Just for public consumption, we have, we started budget planning back in January. We announced a schedule in January. Last month, at the Finance Committee meeting, we did an initial overview with the Finance Committee and talked to them about some of the items. We have also talked in public sessions previously with the board, a previous work session, about things that we would like to include in the total budget for next year that aren't in this year's budget. And I'd like to start with just publicly reminding the board about those items. I also would like to, for the public and the board, say that even though those are things we'd like to add to the budget and you all have not disagreed with those or anything in the past, we still have to bring those to you individually when they deal with personnel improvements. So those still have to come before you when we discuss personnel for a vote. So before we look at the notebook, there should be a sheet that looks like this. I won't spend a lot of time on it because you've seen it before unless you have questions. But just for the record, to let people know that these are items that we want to add to the budget that weren't in there previously. The first one is to hire a district-wide instructional technology facilitator. We are at the point where we are basically one-to-one with computers across the district. I don't think, especially after COVID, that we will ever be able to have instruction that doesn't have some kind of a digital presentation in it in the future. And, and other districts have positions like this, and we feel like we have to have this position. It is not a tech position. It is a position that would train our new people and retrain our old people on the various software programs that we use to teach students digitally and/or to communicate with parents. You know, for example, we added Remind this year, and that was a communication tool, and we've added scribbles and other tools. So that would not come out of the local current expense budget. We think we can pay for that out of the federal Title IV grant. That is a teaching position, not an administrative position, so we'll look for a teacher. That's probably going to run in the mid-50s, depending upon who the Technology Department interviews and selects, plus all the benefits. Any, and I know we've talked about these before. Any questions about that one? Okay, very quickly looking at the second one. We've talked about the discrepancy in the workload for lead teachers at smaller schools and larger schools. I want to say publicly that every lead teacher provides a, that provides valuable support to the school, and it's a position that lots of other school districts we don't have. But when you get to schools that are larger, that workload is more significant, and sometimes those folks need to come in and work extra hours, or even some on the summer. So what we have proposed to do, there is a $1,500 supplement stipend in place for lead teachers already. We would propose that we would leave that in place as is for schools 400 students, less than 400 students. And then we would increase that $1,000 to $2,500 for schools 400 to 699. We would increase, increase that 2,000, another $1,000 to $3,500 for schools 700 to 1,999. And then the thousand or more, we would increase it another $1,000. That's a total cost of around $13,000, and helps us some with that discrepancy. Any questions about that one? That is a local budget item. All right? And then the early college, we project to be, Mrs. Barker and Lori Fox and I have talked about that the other day. Mrs. Barker's been doing her position allotment work that I did for a number of years and Dr. Garrett did before me. We project there are going to be around 200, somewhere between 195 and maybe 205. And if that holds, then certainly they, they need another front office person. All of our schools that have 200 or more students have basically a receptionist and then a person who does more of the data and software. The early college has a grant, and they could help us pay half of that salary for the first year. That's about $35,000 total. Again, it will depend upon who is hired after the interviewing and their years of experience. That, that initial salary is around $22,000 or $23,000, plus all the FICA retirement, health insurance, and other benefits we're required to have. Any questions about that one? And then two more. We talked to you about moving our Testing and Accountability Officer, Teresa Cook, out of the Technology Department and into CNI. That's where that position is located in most school districts. We would like to move her from a Level III to a Level IV administrator. But she was, she would take on additional duties as appropriate. That's about $4,500, a little less than $4,500. And then we have talked to you about the Technology Department. Dr. Putnam and I and Kim Jackson and others have worked on making sure that that department is filled with competent people. They did a great job getting us through the ransomware recovery, and we would like to not change the number of positions in the department, but to have, instead of one Level III tech, to have two, and then have one less Level II tech and, and one more Level I. Again, depending upon who always hired, we think that's going to be $16,000 to maybe $24,000. We do not know until, this is all again for next school year, getting all these people in place before or as we get toward next school year. So any, any questions about that position?
Currently, we have one Level III?
We had one Level III, who was Price Barry Hill, a very good employee, and he managed both sides of the network and did a very good job of doing that. And because of the workload and for security reasons, we'd like to split that into two Level Threes and have one person manage more, in very layman's terms, because I'm not a tech person, have one person manage more of the hardware side of that, and then another person manage more of what goes on inside the system, inside the network.
Do we know how many Level Twos we have currently and how many Level Ones?
We would, we would, we have seven total. Is that right, Dr. Putnam? So we would, we would add another level, we would, we would make one of our Level Twos a Level One. No, we would, we would add, we would make one of our Level Twos a Level Three, and then we would have, how many?
We'd hire a three.
Thank you.
We would promote a two.
So that'll give us two Level Twos and then three, three Level Ones?
Three Level Ones.
We're going to keep seven total, basically is what you're saying?
We want to keep the same staffing because it's a big job, and as everyone knows, it's a growing job.
Now, one addition is the instructional.
Yeah, the instructional coach is different.
If you, right.
Yeah. And that's not a tech position. That's a training position.
Even though it's computer-related, it's not tech.
Other questions about those? Okay. So you, that's just as a reminder that as we talk about the budget, we think these things will be in there. Some of this is paid out of local and some from other fund sources. And again, as these positions are filled, they come to you in personnel, and you discuss those and vote on those. Thank you very much. So let's, let's open the big notebook. There are three sections with a, a budget message. So I'm going to talk about the budget message, which is basically just the Cliff Notes on, in general, what's in there. Bob Phillips, who is here out of retirement, he did, I'm sure he doesn't feel like he's retired. But since Leanna has been out with her illness, and we communicate with her often and hope we'll get her back sometime before the next school year starts, at least part-time. I don't know how we could have, could have done the budget development without Bob or someone who had been the Finance Director before. But Bob and I will both go through current expense and entertain questions along the way. Again, we've already done a preview for the Finance Committee. Dr. Putnam will go over capital and child nutrition, and then we'll entertain any questions. And then when, if you don't have any, or after questions are answered, we'll move on to the next items. Okay? So, looking at the budget message, and I won't read every word of it, but in that first paragraph, we basically talk about our mission and really the purpose of this budget. And we have the things numbered in there. The first one is to recruit, maintain, and support employees in their work, in their passionate work. We, we still believe that our employees are our most valuable asset. There are no instructional programs or machines or tools that can completely replace or, or work as effectively as a great teacher or a great teacher assistant or custodian, or you fill in the blank on the employees. So we want to maintain supplements and do other things that we can do to get people in here and keep them. The second one is to limit expansion items, and you can say, you can see what I have shared with you. That's very easily under $40,000 and maybe under 20. It just depends on who we hire to fill those positions that we're requesting. And then third is to adjust the budget as appropriate to account for the unexpected impacts of the COVID-19 crisis. I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the line items. And then you see a list of, of the fund areas, two being local and then the other fund codes there. And then if you look at the last paragraph, well, if you look at the paragraph under the list, you see the expansive nature of benefits that we have to pay. 7.65% employer matching for FICA, 21.68% employer matching for retirement, and $6,326 annual cost for employee matching for hospitalization. So when we hire a full-time employee, we're spending well over $6,000 before we actually start paying them. Okay? And that applies to all school districts.
The governor's recommended budget has the retirement rate 23. something, so, you know, it could go up two more percent.
It could. And then the last paragraph just talks about the funding formula. In that very first sentence, we got a nice 2.7%, 7% increase per student in enrollment from the county in our renegotiated funding formula. This is the second year of that formula. The difficult thing for us, and it's not anyone's fault, it's a reflection of COVID, is that we were at around 7,100 students, and the local measure that we use, the best of the first two months for students, is 6,765. And we've talked about that before in Finance and other meetings. We have 433 brick-and-mortar charter students. They're all not at the local brick-and-mortar. They're scattered across western North Carolina. And then we have some anticipated revenues that we list later, but they're not really part of the pupil appropriation. We think that the, the, and, excuse me, we have 42 virtual students. They, they don't have the same rate as the brick-and-mortar. And then we think that the ABC revenues could be between 20,000 and 41.5. We put 41.5 in there because the county felt like that was a more accurate anticipation. We really don't know until that money's collected and sent to us. And then fines and forfeitures over time have been about $375,000. Now, Bob and I will both tell you, and so will Bryant Morehead, that the courts have been closed. So we're putting that in there, and we don't think it, it will be near that much. And the only thing we can promise you is we won't spend it until we get it. How's that? We just don't know what's going to come in there. And then if you look at the local restricted funds, these are funds that we have on hand that a lot of people call fund balance, or they're in, in lines that are only spent for purposes, for specific purposes. That's a little over $3 million. When we ended last school year, we get, we get an accurate number once a year when the fiscal year closes. It was at 2.9 million last year in July. And we, we've done better, and we're, you know, trying to not spend as much fund balance and get our budget to an actualized point, so we know it's a little over three. The capital is nine. Again, Dr. Putnam will talk about that in a minute. And child nutrition, 900,000. Child nutrition is 4.4 million, 75,569. Just a little general information beyond that. The state has sort of a, curved the grades, so to speak, on our actual student number. They get to do that. Sir, they're, they're going to fund us for a few more students. They're going to fund us for 6,973, and the state allocation is 47,475,906. And then the grant money, which runs across all the titles. Title I, which you know is mainly elementary remediation and enhancement. Title II is mainly employee, staff development and things for employees. Title IV is some new grants, which we have hired some therapists out of, and we would hire the instructional facilitator out of. When you add up all the federals, and there are more than those listed there, it's 7.6 million, a little bit more. Any questions about the big overview part? Okay, great. I'm sorry to take so much time, but this is an important thing that we do. And so just one more reminder, and then we'll try to go through these quickly, and we'll pause between codes and pages in case you have questions. But just as a reminder, and I'll certainly want to do this when we present to the commissioners early in May. Three years ago, we stopped putting fund balance into the budget upfront, and we called that an actualized budget, and we have worked very, very hard. Dr. Garrett did some of that work before she left on trying to spend less fund balance and to keep it at a stable rate. And we had spent, I think at one time, as much as maybe 1.6 million, and we got it down to about 800,000, and then 600,000. Last year, we spent four, and so we're getting close. I think the plan's going to work in another year or so. And so this is an actual budget of the revenues, the column on the right, that we expect to have. And we do think that if we have a normal year, we'll have to spend a little bit of fund balance to make some of these line items meet. Okay? If we have a great year, maybe not. We'll see how it shakes out, but we're getting pretty close, I think, in a year or two. All right, so just that reminder. Now we'll go through the lines. Bob and I are going to take different ones, and I may look at him and go, Bob, is that one yours or mine? I don't remember. But I have the very first one. Is that correct, Bob?
Yes.
I have the first one. That's classroom teachers. Again, this is only local money. This pays for about 29 and a half local teachers, includes lead teachers, and our summer months of employment for head football coaches and high school band directors. Okay? Any questions about that? I think Bob has the next one.
Okay. Central Office Administration, this includes things like property insurance, membership dues, board travel, liability insurance, copier cost, and legal and audit cost, and superintendent, assistant superintendent, and administrative specialists and their, and their fringe benefits.
And, and I, I think we should miss, list the numbers. We'll certainly, on Monday, show this on the screen, and people who are watching the live stream can see it. But for night, to tonight, we probably should show the numbers. In that first classroom teacher area, that's 1.8 million, $7,140 and some change. And then in the central office, insurance and positions and paying the electrical bills, utility bills, and things like that, that's 937,265.81 cents. I have the next area, which is non-instructional support. We do spend a lot of our local money on non-instructional support. These sometimes highly skilled people are our most valuable employees. They, they do a lot of stuff. So in OO3, non-instructional support, we have 29 clerical. We have our substitutes in there. That's, you know, that, that's a, a lot of people and positions. We have eight tenths, or 80% of the transportation director's salary. Some of that is paid from driver's ed. We have 40% of the CTE director's salary. The rest of that is paid from another fund source. We have the maintenance director, finance, HR, ITC. Child nutrition, local match, which is about 62,000. You'll see that number again in another location. Any questions about that? Bob has OO5.
Okay. PRC 5, School Building Administration. This is your assistant principals. Any extra duty stipend, fringes, and copier costs for the schools.
I'm just going to go, and y'all just stop me instead of me saying, do you have any questions? Y'all just stop us if you want to stop us. Save us a minute here. OO7 is instructional support, so 294,222 and some change. Social workers, library media, local guidance, and the school nursing contract, as well as some benefit costs associated with those positions, and a little bit of tri, travel out of county if they get to go to a workshop, and then supplies and materials for those people.
Okay. PRC 9 is non-contributory employee benefits. This is when a employee leaves in the middle of the year, we have longevity payouts that we pay out of there. Also, we pay our workers' comp and our unemployment cost out of that.
Quarter million dollars, 250,952. PRC 014 is career technical program support. This is local support for that program. We have the regular administrative stipend and connected benefits for the director. But a large portion of this, about 74,000, 75,000, is equipment and supplies and materials for CTE. That total is 49,391. And then I think I have most of the next page.
Yeah, except the bottom.
Except the very bottom one. Okay. And so OO15 is school technology. You'll remember with Dr. Putnam's planning and some prioritizing that we made administratively that you all allowed us to put in a student device replacement line. So that is the first one, OO15, 337,540. Then we have exceptional children's program support. These are, this is mainly supplies and materials locally for that program, 126,330. Academically gifted program support, again, that's tutor, some benefits and some supplies and materials, This is the charter pass-through money. Our county is gracious enough to give us the local per pupil funding for the charters, and then monthly, we send it to them based upon their enrollment. It's OO36, 800,000 plus or minus. That number does change some during the year. English language learner program support, that's a teacher and benefit cost, 47,665. Transport, transportation of pupils, this is local money for the Transportation Department. It's some travel for training, supplies, materials, and then 145,142 for repair parts and labor and materials. That's a pretty big, pretty big line. I probably should have said this upfront, board, you'll see that some of these lines are a little higher and some are a little lower. And so we did the best we could not reinventing the budget during COVID. And so where we were paying people, we tried to make sure that those lines were what we needed in them to pay our people. And then a lot of our other lines have been reduced three, three and a half percent so that we're not putting in an actualized budget more than we expect the revenue to be. Should have said that upfront. Sorry about that. Class instructional supplies and equipment, that, that's OO61. That's the, that's the local money that every school gets to pay for copiers and buy paper and, and buy instructional supplies and equipment, 157,319. At-risk students, OO69, supplies and materials. That's a pretty small number. Most of our state OO69 goes to Central Haywood High School. That's what most districts do with OO69 money. Anyway, the supplies and materials, just under $2,000. Middle school remediation, local OO70. Middle school remediation, local, 072, 96,440. That's allocated to middle schools based upon non-proficient scores so they can remediate those students. The junior ROTC programs, this is our contribution to paying the teachers for those programs. The military does give us money, but it does not cover the cost. It may cover about half of it, 151,890. And do you have ineligible transportation, or is that one mine?
Yes, that's 706 ineligible transportation. That's mostly activity bus. But we do receive income from using those buses, and we can use that to purchase new activity buses.
The state, we can use state money to work on the yellow buses. When we work on the white bus, it's the local budget.
800, safe schools, that's for gate guards at the high schools and drug screening. Athletic coaching supplement, that is for both employee coaches and non-employee coaches. That's 287,000. Then band and cultural arts, that's for band and course, 25,879. And then we have high school remediation. The other remediation was middle school, 165,875. Then 805, system instructional report, support, that's large band instruments, cultural arts, summer school, P E A I G, 111,864. 806, computer system support, that's 65% of the testing coordinator, the IT techs and library books, and then fringes for the salaries.
You don't see elementary remediation. That is federal Title I money. That's why it's not in the local current expense budget. If we move to 807, curriculum development, that's a little bit of money that we have on the curriculum instruction side for workshops, travel, supplies, and materials. In-school suspension, you can see the teacher assistant costs, subs for those people, related benefits. So anyway, the curriculum development, I forgot to list the amount, 11,862. In-school suspension, just under $80,000, it's 79,221. The employee supplement is the last thing on page four of this part of the notebook, 2.1 million, 2,160,795. That is money well spent, and the increase that you did for classified or hourly people from 2% to 4% is in that, and I think very much worth it. And do I take us to the end on this part?
You've got the first one, community relations.
Community relations, okay. The community relations is a very small public information and relations budget. We buy ads sometimes, like congratulations, graduates, and things like that. That's 7,233, and there's a little advertising, printing, binding, some membership costs in there, and some supplies.
Okay. 816, employee celebration, that's the teacher of the year, principal of the year, and the dinner we have for the retirees. 827 is school resource officer, their cost and vehicle cost, vehicle repair cost and fuel. 838, physical baseball field, that's the lease that we pay on that baseball field. And last is 899 contingency, that's just something for just in case. Really not allocated to anything in particular.
Okay, and then you can see the total proposed allocation from the county based upon students is 16,994.93, that is down, and it is not down because the county is giving us less per student. They are giving us more according to the funding formula, 2.75% more per student at a rate of 2,200, and I forget that number, $91.33.
2291.33.
Yeah. But it's down because our enrollment is down to 67.65. We feel good about that. We don't like having a lower number, but we do have fewer students to serve, and most public school systems across the state have experienced that kind of decline. And then you can see down there in the red, the allocation is, part of that allocation includes our best possible guess on fines and forfeitures because the courts have been closed, and our best possible guess on ABC revenues. All right? Any questions about that?
Does the ABC store next to Walmart get paid off yet?
I don't think so. Most of the rest, no, I don't think it has, no. Most of the rest of this section is just lots of ways to look at these codes. So if you're a board member, or commissioner, or someone in the media, or whoever, and you want to know what 001 means, or what 6,000 means, or, most of the rest of this is just to help people understand what it looks like. And so, did you have the first, who had the report codes page, me or you?
Yeah, I can take it.
Okay.
The classroom teachers, 1.8 million. Central Office Administration, 937,000. Non-instructional support, that's our biggest item, is 6.6 million. That's, maintenance is a big chunk of that. You know, we pay all our electrical bills, all our utility bills, all of that. School building administration, half a million dollars. Instructional support, 294,000. 009, that's what we pay our longevity, our payouts when people leave, 250,000. Career tech, 79,000. School technology, 337,000. TAs, 44,000. EC, 126,000. Academically gifted, 7,300. Charter schools, 800,000. English language learner, 47,000. Transportation of pupils, 154,000. Classroom material, 157,000. At-risk, 1900. Middle school remediation, 96,000. ROTC is 151,000. Ineligible local transportation, 139,000. Safe schools, 48,000. Coaching supplement, 287. Band and cultural arts, 25. High school remediation, 165,000. System instructional support, 111,000. Computer system report, support, 545,000. Curriculum development, 11,000. In-school suspension, 79,000. And the employee supplement, 2.7 million, 2.8 million. Community relations, 7,000. Employee celebration, 15,000. SROs, 184,000. Baseball field lease, 10,000. And contingency, 9,600.
We may want to look at that number and make sure that's right, just see if that's not a typo. The supplement, maybe 2.1.
I think that's, I think that's right. 2.7.
Okay. We had 2.1 in there. I'm just looking at one number where there might be a discrepancy. We'll need to double-check it from Monday on. Sorry, it's a work session, right? So we get to make sure it's right.
On the budget, it's 2.79.
On page five, there's one line on page four, and then the rest of it's on page five.
Okay.
Let's see.
All right. Thank you. Bob, you're right again. All right. The next page is just helping people understand in big chunks, any budget line that is a 5,000 line, 5,100, 200, 300, 400, et cetera, that is instruction, okay? Instructional services, that is 8.8 million. Of the 16 million, that's basically half of the local budget. System-wide support services, that's any code that includes the 6,000 numbers, that is 7.2 million, which is, you know, 41% of the expenditures. We have a small ancillary area of 7,000. That's some nutrition matching. I told you a while ago, you'd see that number again. And some community services, the, excuse me, 8,000 codes, those are special payments or grants that can only be spent for certain areas. For example, if a school or the school system writes a grant, and the benefactor says, "Okay, here's you a grant to do whatever," then the only way we can spend that is for that particular purpose or program. The drive grant is probably a good example of that from the, from Central Haywood. And so that's another way of looking at it based upon the big areas that it's spent, instruction, system support, ancillary, and program. And then, I don't know who had the next one. Object, Bob says I had that one. Object codes, interesting side story, we're doing the work with aspiring administrators. You knew we do that every other year. Well, this morning, we were showing them these codes. Not that they would remember all of them, but basically, anytime you see a code with 100 in it, that's someone's salary. 200 is benefits. 300 is a purchased service. 400 is a supply and material. 500 is capital, and 700 is transfer. So if you see a code in it, and it has 411 in it, that means we're probably buying some paper or something like that. And then the amounts for those codes, you can see is below, of the 16, almost 17 million in allocation, 7.8, or almost half of that, is salaries. And then when you throw in benefits, you're over 10, 10 million out of the 16, almost 17 million. And then we have 2.4 in supplies. We've got a tiny bit of capital outlay in the current expense budgets, furniture and some things like that. And then the transfers, that's the charter stuff that transfers through. Purpose codes, I think this is redundant. This is an explanation of what the 5,600, 6,000, 7,000, and 8,000 mean, if you want to read the paragraphs. So that's a lot, board. Any questions or comments or feedback on the current expense, proposed local budget? We will bring that to you and ask for your approval on Monday. If you, following a public hearing, where we'll make the same information available to people in the public who want to hear the information. And then if approved by you, we have a preliminary date with the commissioners early in May. I think it's the third, but don't hold me to that.
All right.
The next area is capital outlay. I'll pause and let Dr. Putnam talk to you about capital. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you, you have a list of items. You'll see that it covers a good number of schools. We do try to capture capital projects that encompass all of our schools equitably. The first project is Bethel Elementary. The two, three-hall roof is in need of repair, $25,000 for that. Bethel Elementary, the auditorium lighting or floor lighting needs replacing. It'll be $3,500. Bethel Middle, the dining room, AC, you'll hear that a lot, as I name AC and bard units. We're in a real big replacement cycle with those, 42,000. Canton Middle, awning replacement, 60,000. Canton Middle, the carpet, and we'll have to remove asbestos that is, has been identified underneath it, and that will be 50,000. Hazelwood Elementary, the two, three-hall classrooms, we're going to replace carpet in four of those classrooms for 8,000. Jonathan Valley, the K1 building split system, 55,000. Maintenance, extra bard units, so we keep approximately three to four units on hand so as those fail. That's kind of one of those things you cannot be without, and you can't wait on them to ship. So we'll have three or four of those on hand, 40,000. Maintenance is going to replace one of their mowers, the stand-up mower shot, 9,715. Metta Brook Elementary, the exterior doors, the doors and the frames have rusted, so 20,000 there. North Canton Elementary, the front awning, it's rusted, 20,000. North Canton Elementary sidewalk repairs, 2,500. Pisgah High School, the fieldhouse furnace, we're going to switch it and convert to natural gas at a cost of 25,000. Pisgah and Tuscola shop lights, we're going to replace the lights in the shop with LED, 23,000. We'll get an energy savings there as well when you switch to the LED, and a replacement savings because they last longer. Tuscola High School, the plumbing flush valves, basically the valves have rusted, 10,000. Tuscola High awnings replaced between A building and J, 10,000. Tuscola High School bard units, replace in F building, the bard units, cost of 90,000. That's the entire building. Tuscola High School softball field, install backstop, press box, and concrete at a cost of 50,000. And then, then we have various schools for paving. Anyone who's picked a kid up or dropped a child off knows that paving is in great, great need. We have started with 250,000 to begin repairs and replacement where possible on these projects. And then we created those, a list of highest in need. At the very top of that list is Hazelwood. There are some drainage issues and sink holes and other things that are really going to have to be corrected there. If we make it through, you know, Josh has been very good at saving money and getting us the best contracted price that he can. If he saves us a good bit of money there, we'll advance to number two, which is Clyde Elementary. And if we get through Clyde, then we'll advance to Tuscola. We get through Tuscola, we'll go to Metta Brook, Pisgah High, Waynesville Middle, and Canton Middle. It is highly likely that we will budget or earmark money. Not only, we've indicated that here in the upcoming capital budget, but it's likely in subsequent capital budgets that you'll hear more HVAC, and you'll hear more paving Then we have Waynesville Middle kitchen and dining area, install a new roof on the kitchen Install a new roof on the kitchen and dining area, $38,785. Waynesville Middle, uh, dining room AC, uh, replacing, uh, the room bard units, $37.5. And then Waynesville Middle B building lighting, um, $30,000 for a grand total of $900,000. Just so you're aware, $900,000 is what we have requested for the previous two years. Prior to that year, it was, uh, $750,000. Capital is funded through state sales tax dollars. And those are afforded to us through the state and they're held at the county and we, we have to go and request them. So would, also want to say about these projects, how we arrived at those. Again, I would commend Josh and his, his staff, um, for looking at all the needs of all the schools across the county, determining which of those needs are, uh, either a safety priority or a maintenance priority. And equitably assigning or determining projects. And then from that also, um, every year principals get to submit, you know, here, here are projects we need completed. So we look at those in consideration of the capital budget as well. And if done properly, which it has been, uh, most of the time, what principals are requesting and what maintenance has determined as the highest needs usually match. And we have heard for the last couple of years overwhelmingly from principals, awnings and pavement. So is there any questions for me on the capital budget?
I have a question, just one comment. I know the LED lights is something that we started quite a few years ago of changing out in all the schools out in the parking lots and I never did, I don't know how much that savings has been so far, but I know it has been helpful. I mean, it may not, may not show up as a big number all at once, but it eventually, over the timeframe, I know it's had to save us several hundreds and maybe even thousands of dollars in our lighting bill throughout all of our campuses. I think that's, continue on that project for sure. Yeah, we've got to continue on moving to LEDs. And they're also improving LEDs. I mean, I, right, and you wouldn't put up, and it's just twice as better than the other one was. And still going to be less costly to operate it.
You're exactly right. The other thing is they, um, they provide a safe, make a safer campus. The lighting quality is better. It's not a yellow light. It's a bright white light, which, um, you know, safety has to be our number one concern. So we're, we're tickled with that as well. But even as bulbs or ballast fail, uh, these are just projects that we have earmarked that we're going to tackle the whole area and replace with LED. But just so you know, um, methodically throughout the year. Let's say, you know, we, we have that set car at Pisgah and Tuscola in the shop areas. But if one goes out in the front office area, the ballast fails. When we go to replace that, we replace with, uh, an LED fixture that we can actually put in the old ballast style lights and bulbs that work with that, um, adapter that is placed up in the lighthouseing. So, uh, we replace as we go as well.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. If there are not any other questions about capital, Dr. Putnam's going to, uh, share child nutrition.
And I have strict orders from Allison not to mess this up, so I'm going to do my very best. All right, you have, um, uh, something in your notebook that, that looks like this. It's, it's an itemized list, uh, that runs down through there. She has highlighted some areas, uh, of interest for us. And that, in those highlighted areas, she's basically pointing out to us where there's a, a change or a difference. Overall. So first of all, um, if you, I'll start with, um, item number one, which is the director supervisor. There was an increase there. That's a, a projected increase by the state. So she has accounted for that projected increase at $2,000. Office support, again, uh, there's a projected increase there. She's been advised to account for that at a, uh, at an amount of $1,705. No change on substitutes and driver salary. Next is food service employees. Uh, there's a projected increase there totaling $105,010. On managers, there's a projected, um, let me make sure I didn't jump a line. And I did. No, I did.
You're a decrease.
Managers, uh, there's a projected decrease, uh, as requested or required by the state. Supplementary pay for managers, uh, that looks like a s, a projected increase as well, uh, $15,000. Social security, uh, a projected increase of $4,000. Retirement, $10,000 and medical insurance, um, holds the same. Workman's comp, uh, was increased by $15,000. Increase based on prior year costs. Longevity pay holds. Bonus leave payoff holds. Annual leave, uh, payoff holds. Short-term disability holds. Uh, overtime, a state projected increase of $1,000. Contracted services, workshops, travel and unemployment insurance and, uh, those all hold. Telephones, um, there was an error in the previous year's budget. So that has been revised to 27, uh, for a difference of $2,700. So it should be totaled $3100. Hostage, uh, that holds, that amount holds. Mobile communication, we have 15 managers at $20 a month for 10 months. Two child nutrition office staff at $30 a month for 12 months. This was, I believe, presented to finance by Allison. She is proposing that we, uh, allot that amount to give to our managers. Because they re, we really have to have them with their phones on, especially when there's, uh, weather delays. They use it for food delivery notifications. Easier to reach the manager on the cell phone, uh, during the workday due to not being able to hear the office phone when it rings. So they're not someone that sits by or near to a phone. And even if they were, it's noisy in those kitchens. So, uh, we felt like this was a necessary, uh, or a necessity. And the cost of that's $3,720. Membership dues and fees, uh, vehicle liability, supplies, computer software and supplies, uh, gas or diesel fuel, tires and tubes, uh, all hold. Food purchases is up by $73,920. Uh, food processing supplies are up by 2,000. Non-capitalized equipment's a hold. Uh, non-capitalized computer equipment's a hold. Equipment overall is up $40,000. We need a new dishwasher at Metta Brook Elementary School and a serving line at Bethel Middle School. And then depreciation, uh, they're telling us, uh, that should be a difference of $10,000. So show the depreciation of $10,000. So all of that, that's, that's a mouthful. And then you can see lower in that table. I won't go through the, each of those. But funds moved to 3817. There's a new line, uh, which was included, uh, in 3811 in previous years. The increased due, uh, to increased participation. A new at-risk after-school su, supper program. So we're going to try to, uh, offer meals to students in after-school, which would be a really good thing. And then 40, they moved the, um, add Jonathan Valley as a CEP school. That's, uh, community feed school where everyone eats, uh, for free. So they decrease in the paid student participation. Moved, uh, that to 4318 and added Jonathan Valley, uh, also as a C, CEP school. So the decrease, uh, in paid student participation. So one was up, one was down. And that's, that's why that looks the way it does. And then, um, the thing that makes a little more sense to me, um, if you'll flip to the next page. Here's the big numbers. So in 2021, uh, the budget for school nutrition was $4,189,514. The budget for this, or proposed budget for school nutrition for 2122 is $4,473,569. So that's a, an increase, uh, of $284,055 total for next year. Child nutrition operates independently of other programs. Revenues include cash for meals and supplemental sales, uh, sale items sold, USD cash reimbursements and USD donated commodities. This budget for this coming year, uh, will show an increase of 6%. And you've already heard some of those totals and where they came from and why. Uh, the expenses though, the balance will budget with the revenues, that being $4,473,569. Labor and benefits, 57% of that. Food and supplies, 37% of that. And overhead, 6%. And overhead, uh, typically is your equipment, uh, and operational costs. And then she has a table for us to look at. USD DA reimbursement rates have included only a cost of living increase in the past several years. 2122 budget assumes that there will be no federal budget cuts in the upcoming year. So there's always some budget assumptions. I've heard Dr. Nolte say that you have to assume that some things will remain the same. Current reimbursement rates are as follows. Breakfast, we're reimbursed at a rate of, uh, uh, is 226. Uh, and that's, if they're a paying student, it's, um, I guess I should say this, uh, breakfast will stay at two, let me make sure I'm saying this right. I don't want to mess it up. Yeah, the re, the reimbursement rate for breakfast is 226.
These are just reimbursement rates. They're not pay rates.
Not, that's correct.
The pay rates are at the bottom. Go ahead. Yeah, this is what we get reimbursed.
Right.
Students would pay for breakfast.
And for, right.
And if they're free, we get reimbursed 226. If they're free, we get reimbursed 360. And if they're free, we get reimbursed 96 cents for a snack. If they're reduced, it's these numbers. And if they pay, we get reimbursed these numbers.
Very good. You did good.
I've been doing this a long time.
You did good.
I do have a question. Right now, um, like, the breakfast and lunch is still free for the kids at all schools, correct?
Well, if they qualify, uh, or if they're a part of the CEP.
What did that COVID money, because at one time it was free with the COVID funds, correct?
That was just during the summer, the summer feeding. The summer feeding and, and, uh, there are, there have been some meal pickups for people who are not in, not on campus.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, the bottom line, there's assistance there for those who qualify.
Okay.
And so prior to COVID, the average plate cost to produce a breakfast was a dollar 86 and lunch was 372. The 2122 budget does not include an increase in meal prices. Current meal prices for breakfast, uh, for pre-K through 12 are a dollar 25 for breakfast. Lunch, it'll be 255, pre-K through 5. And then 6 through 12 for lunch will be $2.80. And then 9 through 12 mega meals. So we only have mega meals at the high schools. And that's where they get what they really like, the, the hot wings and the pizza and, and what have you. And those are 350. And we have five schools approved, uh, for the community eligibility provision, uh, no-cost meals to all students. And those schools are Central Haywood High School, Clyde Elementary, Haywood, uh, Hazelwood Elementary, Jonathan Valley Elementary and North Canton Elementary. For those, uh, there's no charge at all there. They're the community eligible schools.
Any questions for Dr. Putnam or any of the rest of us on child nutrition? Again, board without objection, we'll also bring the capital and child nutrition budgets and seek your approval on Monday after the hearing.
Sounds good.
Okay. Very good. Looking at the agenda, we have a, um, not complete, uh, summer school update because we still don't have all of our information from the state. But Mrs. Barker is going to share with us what we know so far. I think we're comforted in the fact that it is still April and we want our folks focusing on the rest of April, May, and a little bit in June. Oh, wait a minute.
I don't care what the order, I'm just pointing.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I skipped Dr. Putnam. Let's let him do, uh, the board, uh, building update and the capital budget that's, he's working on. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, I will just, uh, briefly, I gotta cut my microphone on. I'll just bring you briefly up to date on our Board of Education building. The plumbing, uh, is 100% roughed in, uh, and we also had a restroom flipped. They had the doors facing some offices, which meant odorous at times. They were flipped to the opposite side, so they were not facing offices. That has been completed as well. Uh, the elevator tower, uh, CMU is complete. The interior metal, metal stud wall framing is complete. Uh, the plumbing work above slab is completely roughed in and HVAC units, uh, going in. An outside air unit is on the roof. So they're progressing nicely. The general inclination is that they're ahead of schedule. However, getting ahold of materials is going to be the challenge. So, um, Sheet Rock, uh, I've heard from some suppliers are six months out. Any questions about the Board of Education building?
It's moving along though, if you go by there.
Capital.
Yes. Sorry about that. Sorry about that, Dr. Putnam. And, uh, the capital is a double print there. So now Ms. Barker will tell us what we know about summer school and funding. And, uh, we know some things, but we don't have all the rules yet.
Chairman Francis and members of the board, just an update. I know you've heard probably about House Bill 82. This has been out in limbo for several months. We've been waiting to get, um, that bill passed or changed. And finally that happened. It unanimously passed both the House and the Senate and the governor signed it into law Friday. So we had made preliminary plans even back last fall, knowing, um, the learning losses associated with COVID and social emotional supports our students were going to need. We had met with all principals. Every meeting we had with them, we discussed what they thought their plans would be. And then in December, we had some preliminary plans. In December, we learned that there would be some new ESER money that would be coming to our district. And summer school would more than likely probably be required. Excuse me, ESER, when you hear that, that stands for the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Act. We tend to refer to those as COVID funds sometimes, but ESER again is the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Act. House Bill 82 specifically addresses summer learning. It's actually called Summer Learning Choice for North Carolina families. So I will tell you a little bit about what this law says. And I will also let you know by the end of next week, we're going to know a whole lot more. I just received notification that the State Board is going to meet on Monday at 4:45. So, um, to provide guidance to local LEAs, I've had several meetings this week. And so that information is trickling out and everybody's anxious to know what it's going to look like. But, um, we just have to go through this process and see. Let me give you the specifics though. And basically the purpose of this, as you could, um, probably guess, is to provide And basically the purpose of this, as you could probably guess, is to provide in-person instruction, not remote instruction, but in-person instruction on specific subjects in grades K through twelve. So it's all grades to address learning loss and other negative impacts of COVID-nineteen. Who is going to get to come do these summer programs that we have? Those will be any at-risk students who are identified by our district. This will affect, you know, how will we determine who's at risk in our district? In our elementary and middle schools, we will have end-of-year assessments. We have grades. We have teacher recommendations. In the elementary, we have M-class data. So we have a variety of data that we will be able to use to assess who is at risk. In high school, it'll be a little bit more basic because we have students who need credits and who need to recover credits to graduate on time. So that is, um, who. Is it open to other students? It is open to other students. After, if there's additional room, students can come for enrichment and participation if these at-risk students' needs are met. So we have to submit, Haywood County Schools has to submit a plan no later than thirty days prior to the final instructional day, which is toward the end of this month. We have been told at, as of today, that the F A Q, frequently asked questions and document, the template for this plan is supposed to be shared by Tuesday. So on Tuesday, I should have some sort of template where we can put our information in and then submit it by the end of the month. What does the instruction look like in the law? We have to provide a hundred and fifty hours or thirty days. And when you look at our calendar, that does, that's most of our summer, okay? If you run, and again, we don't have the definite schedule yet, but I just wanted to give you an example. If we run a program Monday through Thursday from eight until four, there's an hour in there that we probably wouldn't count. And that's seven hours a day that you're looking at. If we did this for six weeks, we would be at a hundred and sixty-eight hours. So that's kind of running it Monday through Thursday, seven until, yeah, excuse me, eight until four. That would put us over the amount of hours. So you can see whatever our principals come together and decide, um, and along with our district office staff, it's going to look five or six weeks, okay, of instruction. What has to be provided? These are minimums. But in kindergarten through second grade, we have to provide reading and math instruction. And also in grades three through eight, we provide reading and math, but we also include science. And in all these grades, K through eight, we need to provide at least one enrichment activity, whether it be sports, music, art, some sort of enrichment activity. This law even says in the law, this needs to be fun and inviting for students. So the, the purpose is to try to encourage students to come and recover some losses that they've had in academics. In high school, what does that look like? Well, it's going to be a lot of, um, of credit recovery. We use a computer program online for that. We can use North Carolina Virtual Public Schools and probably Apex Credit Recovery System. We are required also to provide in-person instruction in our E O C courses in high school. That means we would have to have Math One, Math Three, Biology, and English Two teachers in person in high school to provide remediation and enrichment in those courses. The law also speaks to providing social emotional supports in place while this school is going on. I spoke to the fund positive environment. Dr. Putnam and I have talked briefly already about meals and transportation will, are required to be provided to students. And pay. This is where a lot of, right now, the questions from other people who are in our position are asking. And we hope the guidance will help to clarify that next week. But there are some shells in this law, two big ones. The first one is there shall be a signing bonus of twelve hundred dollars for any teacher who has earned a past performance bonus. It doesn't say how long in the past. It does not speak to the exact subject. It just says a past performance bonus. Or a teacher who has national boards. So the questions that are being asked by my, myself and my colleagues across our region are, what if someone doesn't want to work the entire time? Do they get the entire twelve hundred dollars? I mean, you can understand, there are so many questions we have to have clarified, and we hope to have that by the end of next week. But that is a shell. Another shell is that a hundred and fifty dollars per student will be paid for a teacher. If students don't demonstrate proficiency on the end-of-grade reading test, but they come to the camp and they complete an assessment and they pass that, then that teacher who taught them in that summer session will receive, the third grade, teacher will receive, or whoever's teaching that child will receive a hundred and fifty-dollar bonus per student. And we don't know what assessment is being used. Completed a survey today from D P I and their Office of Learning on what assessments we currently use, what assessment would we like to use for this? So again, there's a lot of gray area there. I do want you to know, and I quoted this here, so I wanted you to hear. When we're talking about pay, a lot of the, the talk in our region is, um, you know, you, that is a minimum. You know, I know in the past we've paid, you know, usually an hourly rate of twenty dollars for tutoring. I think there will be more flexibility in what we pay our teachers. And it even, this is the quote that is in the law. Local Boards of Education are encouraged to find ways to incentivize highly effective teachers to participate in the program, such as increased compensation and varied contract durations. So they have also spoke to, if you have a hard time, you know, you can incentivize people through, through these funds. So those will be some great conversations we'll be having in conjunction with you and next week when we can figure this out. Our people are tired. They have worked really hard and they've done a fantastic job. And, um, you know, this is a law and we want to try to get through this and help our people. And it's also a good opportunity for our students and, and our teachers too, so.
I, I would just add, excuse me, I, I would just add in case you have questions. I want to repeat that this is COVID funding. So this is not local or existing state funds. This is the COVID money that is being dropped a- as we speak, actually. We had a drop earlier and we spent that on, you know, temperature scanners and cleaner and, and Plexiglas and all those things. Uh, but this is another drop. And so it's not local money. We will bring you a plan, obviously, to approve for summer school before summer. I would hope in around or near the May meeting, um, before, if we can, once we get the state guidance. And I will also say, um, it appears from everything that we have read that there will be the opportunity for very robust summer learning programs for at least the next two summers based upon the funds they're giving us and how long those funds will be available.
Is it premature to know how many teachers that we're going to be able to get?
No, what we've talked, I think it is a little bit.
Do you have an idea, I guess, are we going to be able to have enough teachers willing to do it?
I think we will, once, once we are able to show them that we're, that we are going to use the COVID funds and pay them very nicely. Certainly, some people just need a break and I get that. So if they're, if they're a highly capable teacher and they go, I'm out, I, we get it. Because, you know, our people have worked like crazy. I think what we'll need to do, Mr. Henson, is we'll need to register our students so we know how many teachers we really need. And we might even want to hire, if they're available, more teachers than we actually need because that really reduces the student size in groups or classes. But we'll need to know the minimum number of teachers that we'll need to pull it off. And so as soon as the rules drop, hopefully next week after the State Board meeting that Mrs. Barker talked about, I think then we can start talking about registration and then we'll know the minimum that we need. And, um, I feel like we'll have them. We'll, you know, we won't know until we ask our teachers. But it's hard to ask them right now without them knowing what the dollar amount is. But we want to make it as attractive as possible. We, 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 we want that to be, um, learning time for students, but we want that to be a, a good financial incentive, a very good financial incentive for highly qualified teachers who want to work.
I think also we need to find out, I'm sorry, I think we also need to find out the, um, amount of time they're actually going to be in the classroom or be required to reach those things. And you may have said that, I'm sorry.
Well, here, I, I think.
I think that some of the teachers may, I would want to know, am I going to have a, a ability to take a vacation or a two weeks? Or am I going to have a three week or?
Here, here's what Jill has been asking, and I don't want to speak for her, but I know she's talked to her colleagues. We're, we're, but I'm doing it anyway. You can always fill in. What, what we want to be able to do is to, uh, design it for our students and for our teachers. And let's say we're doing, um, thirty hours or, or, you know, we're a hundred and fifty hours total, but we're doing an intense thirty-hour period or a sixty-hour period over a, a two or three-week period in English Language Arts for elementary students. We'd like to design it so that our teachers can move in and out of that and do different parts of it. Now, that's what we're waiting on the state to tell us. Yeah, we want to make it, um.
The proof is in the details, they say.
Yes, it is. We, we want to make it financially attractive, but we also want our people to have a week or two of vacation or all summer if they really want it. But
Absolutely.
Different people need different things. I'm sorry. Do you have stuff to add?
Yeah, I wasn't finished, but that's okay. That's okay. Um, I just want to tell you where we were right now. We had met with principals or, you know, talked about that earlier on. We met with curriculum leaders this week. Mr. Francis, just to talk about what you're saying, initial plans and what those hours will look like and just trying to get the information we need. We are meeting Monday, Dr. Nolte said, with the district leadership, just to look at that funding. And I think what Dr. Nolte said is correct. I mean, we need, we have done interest surveys for our teachers already. All the principals have gone back and asked teachers who would be interested. But it's hard for them to commit when they don't know the timeframe and they don't know the pay. So we do have some names of teachers who said, regardless, I would like to work. And, you know, hopefully we'll have many more of those. And some that said, there's no way, you know, so. But anyway, we will also meet with principals next week just to, I've got some tentative plans. They can take those and pull them and stretch them and we'll make that fit. But again, it is, the law is pretty strict on what that's going to look like. And we'll let the principals help with our curriculum leaders design those programs. I, I want something that's going to be permanent. This is money that we don't always get. I look at this as a great opportunity for our kids to recover some losses. So we'll get through this part of the planning and really try to make it, as Dr. Nolte said, really robust for this year and worthwhile for our teachers and kids. I do think it's a great opportunity, so. Any other questions for me? You can interrupt whenever you want. You're the boss, Dr. Bill.
For the record, I'd like to apologize to Dr. Putnam for skipping him and Mrs. Barker for interrupting her.
You're good.
Shame, shame.
Any additional questions for Mrs. Barker on summer school?
As you get information, just share it with us as you can.
Yeah, we will.
Please, Ms. Barker, thank you.
I have just a couple announcements, one on the agenda and one other one before you consider closed session. There, we are actually bringing you some printed material on twelve-month installments. Again, just a little bit of background, we have shared this with, uh, eight or ten of the employee roundtable groups. We've shared this with principals. And in short, you know, I can be too long, but in short, the State Department of Public Instruction announced, I guess a couple of months ago now, that they were no longer going to provide us with the software and services to, to do summer installments for ten-month employees. We didn't know what that meant at first, uh, but after we investigated that through H R and talking to our attorneys, we think that there is a legal obligation for us to provide that to teachers who might ask for it. And certainly if we're going to do it with teachers, we would want in Haywood County to do that for other ten-month employees. And so, um, what we will do is we will do payroll deduction and hold whatever funds ten-month employees want us to hold. They might want us to hold out more than they would normally get in two checks because their summer might, they think it might be more expensive. Or they may not have childcare costs during the summer because they'll be at home with their children and they may not need quite as much. Uh, and they may want to hold out less, but we, we will, through our payroll deduction process, hold funds for them. We will be announcing that in early May, like we normally do with ten-month employees. If you want twelve checks, let us know. And so we'll do it that way. It, it will be a little different in that it won't be a check that is taxed. I think it will be taxed upfront. And so the money that they get, that they put over on the side during the summer will have already been taxed. And we will also tell employees about how they can do that on their own, at their own financial institution, if they choose to. There are benefits and a little bit of potential risk if you do it with your financial institution. The benefit, obviously, is you might earn a little interest if you do it at your own financial institution. The risk is you might get in there and spend it before you're supposed to, and the summer could be a little lean. But in, in, in May, in, in pretty early May, we'll tell people that we're going to do it. And if you want to do it on your own, we suggest that you talk to your financial institution. Any, any questions about that? Okay, very, very good. The other thing that you hopefully saw in your packet, you all were kind enough to approve the previous board meeting graduation dates without times and locations because it is such a strange COVID time. Uh, our schools now have times and locations. Uh, and we bring this to you for your information. We ask for them to wait to announce this until in the morning, until you all could see it. But there, there are, as Paul Harvey used to say, there's the rest of the story. And we, uh, I think Mr. Francis Brook has put this on the agenda for Monday night's meeting, so everyone can see it in print.
Okay, very good. Yep.
They have it. They, we just asked them not to tell the world. We like to tell you all first when we can.
Okay.
You, you might start getting calls about, now, what's this date again? And at least now you can look at your piece of paper and tell them.
Very good. Board members, I, I assume the, uh, work session is going to be concluded now and we'll go ahead and, uh, ask for a motion to go into closed session.
So it's moved.
Clark's made the motion, second, Mr. Rogers. Any questions discussing on the motion on the floor? There being them will vote, all those first, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're going to recess into closed session. We're going to take a brief recess for about five minutes to let the folks clear out. And then we'll start our closed session.
Maybe adjourn from closed session.
Yeah, we'll, we will adjourn without taking any action.
I mean, you're welcome to, but I don't anticipate.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'm just giving you some updates. Thank you.
Thank you.